Yeah.
All right, it is six thirty. If everyone would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands as our nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all.
For all of those that are watching at home or watching a few, this is our yearly organizational meeting. So it's a little bit different, but about the same. To begin, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Mr. Udaley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes. And I would accept a motion to approve the minutes for council regular meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I was here for a portion of it. Do I have to abstain? All the way to...
Yes.
Yesterday, you repeated them.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Point of order, could Mr. Tryer call the roll?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was trying. We've done this before, I swear.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
Mr. Udaley.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Herrmann.
Here. Mr. Lewis. Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Here. Thank you, Mayor Carney.
Well, it's Mr. Lewis, yes.
Are we supposed to ignore this?
I swear, it's usually on here. I just go down the line. So, all right, so this is our annual reorganization meeting. To begin, we would, I'd open the floor for nominations for council president.
Nominate Mr. Terry as council president?
I will second.
I will accept. Are there any other nominations for council president? Even after the whole thing? Thank you, guys. We will have a vote.
Mr. Udaley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry.
Upstate. All right, and now I would ask the mayor for her recommendations. I am very comfortable with doing them in bulk and then voting to approve the appointments in bulk as long as my legal counsel and my clerk is okay with that.
Yeah.
We can approve. Yeah, perfect. That's, okay.
And I wanted to kind of have a little bit of an open conversation. I, I, I am keeping everybody pretty much the same as this previous year. I think we had good momentum going. I do know that...
Mr. Sins is taking fire.
Yeah, Mr. Sins is going to take fire board, and then I had Mr. Terry moving to Parks and Rec Committee, so...
Sounds fine. Yeah, I have no problem.
So then, Mr. Herrmann would be BZA. Mr. Terry would be Parks and Rec Committee Personnel and Finance would be Mr. Lewis. Mr. Sins would be Fire Board, and Economic Development Committee is Ms. Ferguson, and then keep Mr. Udaley as CIC. I know CIC isn't on here. We can, are we able to add that on? Okay.
I have no problem. If anyone...
Me.
Mr. Lewis, yeah.
Some continuity.
And then I'll sit on both Union and Madison County, CICs? Are we going to do that still?
Yes, yes.
I like, I mean, for me, it's continuity on both. So I told you in the meeting today that, hey, I'm pushing for Union County to be a permanent seat at their CIC instead of recurring every two years. I'm pushing that issue so we can get on there permanently.
That, that is great, and I appreciate you able, being able to make those meetings. So that is, that is my suggestion.
Motion to approve the... Mayor's nominations to boards and commissions.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Udaley.
Yes.
All right, and now, as we try to do every year, we try to look at our goals and objectives. I sent out our goals and objectives to everyone, and the staff put together a very nice memo and responded back. So would you like to go over your agenda again, and then we can kind of go into if anyone feels that there's any big changes. I think this is a healthy discussion that we usually have every year to make sure we're doing everything. I will say, looking over them just personally, I thought that a lot of what we did this year was in line with our vision, a lot of like expanding public spaces, you know, a lot of the decisions we have been making, and I like that they are less tactical in nature and more vision in nature. If anyone ever see that change, I'm open to it. I think though, us driving more vision and objectives and then tactical execution underneath that seems to work pretty well. But, yeah, so, Ms. Lepin, if you would?
Yeah, I, I agree with your comments, Mr. Terry. The vision is set by council helped to guide the budget, which was recently implemented, as well as some of the sub-goals from staff, the more tactical steps to, to take, to carry out the projects that match the goals. So, we had a really busy twenty twenty four. I don't really want to go through that again, but if we want to focus on the twenty twenty fives, I'm really excited to get started. The CEOs are being opened, the contracts are being signed based on the twenty twenty five budget. To increase, or objective number one is to be seeing village-wide connectivity. There are several integral connection projects that are ongoing and that will be under construction this year, as well as several CIP projects that we hope to fill in for the next couple of years. So we, these are just my suggestions, so feel free to stop me for discussion. Council's goal this year, I would recommend that we focus on completing those projects that are finishing up with ODOT, queuing up that CIP plan for the next couple of years. Staff-wise, that means completing the construction of the intersection improvements at West Avenue and Forty Two, beginning the Uptown Crosswalk project. This will be at Maple Street to cross, to help support our businesses, begin the implementation of the sidewalk program, which will focus on the maintenance of existing sidewalks, specifically in that Zone One that we discussed a couple of months ago, and then continue to apply for funding to keep that sidewalk network going and help to fill in a CIP for the next few years.
Ms. Lepin?
I know we kind of talked earlier. I know we talked like Maple and the Crosswalk. I think one of the other areas possibly to add to look at is down at Park and One Sixty One, just because I know, you know, people leaving the pool or different events, you know, watching cross either Fourth of July or different things. There's nothing marked there. People trying to go get something or something like that. You know, the Crosswalk's either all the way down at Forty Two or you're going all the way down to the library. So I don't know how hard it'd be to kind of add that one in, to get something added there. I think that would be pretty beneficial.
I think that's achievable this year, especially if the police are okay with an additional car, crosswalk on Main Street. We can have that discussion and look at our funding and see. The flashing lights, they're expensive, but they're not, you know, it's not, we can see as the year goes on if we can fit those into the budget for this year.
And then we have the Crosswalk to go over Patrick Park, but I don't know, we, we need to add, yeah, the striping.
Yep, that's on the list. Thank you.
So for the, the Crosswalk projects, what's, what's, like, how involved that, what's, is there an engineering piece? Is there like electrical and, obviously, procurement stuff?
The one at Maple Street.
Are folks putting that in? Or like, what, is that involved?
The, the one at Maple Street has been engineered. We received a CDVG grant for pedestrian because it should help ADA accessibility as well. So that grant, I believe that it starts this January and have two years to complete it. The estimate came in a little bit higher than we expected. It would be a little bit of a butt out from the Animal Hospital, not where the parking space is. That parking space would remain, creating an island where that turn lane begins, to create a place where you can stop in the middle. And then to get across the street, that's the flashing lights. A little bit of streetscape as well in front of the Animal Hospital is included in that project, just because it's a, it needs it, and while we're tearing it up, we might as well finish that. So that would be partially grant-funded, the engineering is done, and then over the next two years.
Okay. Thanks.
Really excited about the connection projects, and we're always looking for ways to get up Forty Two, and there are a ton of ODOT grants open in the next few months that we hope to help fill in that, that plan with. We talk all the time about continuing the work on expanding the Heritage Trail, potential easements. We're doing some planning and the developments. There's a lot of everyone behind the scenes. As you all know, that comes with a lot of private properties. We, there's, there's just a lot of factors that go into that. But a consultant is assisting us in developing a basic trail and network expansion plan, so just like where we already have the, the trail, where it could go based on all of our development. And then, as always, we're, we're looking at properties as they become available, easements of through developments and everything to make sure we can expand the trails as far as possible. Anything else regarding connectivity?
No. My, it sounds pretty good.
Objective number two is focusing on improving and expanding public places, public spaces. This one makes me really excited. I don't know, a few of us attended the eighty-four million a couple of weeks ago, and one of the main speakers was about placemaking and how important it is, and just how transformational some small changes can really create in your community. So, we continue to invest in park land. We have some money set aside. This year, we will close on the Raaber property with that Clean Ohio, and we're beginning the, the visions for Sugar Run Park, not necessarily engineering, but just kind of a plan of what we'd like to see in place for that, and that'll come to council when that's ready, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And then prioritizing open space and future developments. On site, we're having the open space be purchased in the central location, so we don't have a, a ton of neighborhood parks, but we can build on to our current or future parks. And then to focus on placemaking and ensuring our residents have inviting community gathering spaces for years to come, the Depot Plaza continues to move forward. It's, it's a big project this year, but it's on the timeline so far. And then we'll start the engineering for the next phase as well. The bicentennial park engineering is kicking off. That'll be a long process, but we'll take into consideration public input because we know, we hope that's a lasting, it's going to be a large project as well. Those are two really big uptown projects that are coming our way in the next two years.
So the depot will be, that'll be this year, and then Twenty-Six will be the splash pad?
That's the plan.
Okay, and then the farmer's market would be the year after that?
We're starting then...
Because those are the three big things you're thinking of doing down there, right?
Yep, so the reconstruction is almost done. The plaza pre-construction meeting should happen in the next couple of weeks, and weather permitting, sidewalks, the brick plaza, the small path, and the landscaping will be completed this spring. The marketplace, we have started looking at the roof and the building envelope system, because we know that's going to be a large project, and if we can kind of piecemeal it till, over the next couple of years, if it's, fits into the budget, we're going to try to do that. So, we're going to go ahead and engineer as much as we can this year, including the splash pad and the green space. Anything else on number two?
On that, I know, I, I talked to you about, like, adding in some of the, like, historical features, like, in that plaza area of, other communities have, like, either stamped historical timelines or something in their pavement, as kind of like to help pull everything together. So I wanted to see if that could be potentially something as an objective, or to add into that, as we expand our public spaces, how can we tie in our...
I think, I think that's a great goal.
You could do it there, even the bicentennial plaza. You could do it there. When we started getting that design, we could, for me to put bricks down, we could actually even look at selling bricks to people in the community if they want names there.
That, that...
Causes problems.
That was twenty eighteen, coming to council and talking about selling bricks to people. I don't know if you were familiar with that. Okay.
No, I just know the school does it for, over by the Victory Bell.
I think we could do, I think we do, it just has to be open to everybody. That's a resident of the place.
Yeah. Before, it was just brought for historical names.
Oh, no.
Yes.
It should be anybody who wants to do that. Yeah, if you're part of it.
Yes, no, that's a great, that's a great idea. I just wanted to give you that little, that Carrie and I were on council when that first, that came around. Anywhere we had...
Historical elements we're going to. Justin and I visited the Historical Society a few weeks ago, and they've got just a ton of railroad information, old building information, so we're trying to sprinkle a little bit in that to, to really help educate the public. So, we're coming up with our own ideas, that if you think of anything further, definitely know how to handle it.
So, we, in twenty twenty four, we went ahead and did the Quadic Center feasibility study. We have the results of that. Do you plan on not having any action on that in twenty twenty five, and is that why there's nothing called out in the objectives for twenty twenty five?
Yeah, Sonja and I have been working with Mr. Conley on developing the really long-term CIP and the funding sources behind those large projects. That's going to take some creative funding, potentially park levy, things that are not short-term. So, we're going to help lay some groundwork on how we want to get there this year.
So, so, I was going to bring this up in objective three, but this is just as fair of a time. So, the long-term CIP, I think, with Mr. Conley's help, he had came and visited, and then I think Justin said he's open to coming back and talking with us, and, hey, just pick out a time. And I said, okay, well, let me, I, I want to get through the new year and get to this point. So, when do we think a good time to review? Because I think, separate from the budget, the goal is to review the long-term CIP and prioritize and get all of us, because I think by the time we get to the budget, right, so much of it's laid out. So, is February, is March, what, what are you targeting? And we can just go ahead and, you know, we usually try to build out some of these early work sessions. Which one are you thinking would be good? Has, do we want to invite personal finance as well? That, what are you thinking on that? Because that's, that's the thing I, I feel like helps me with all these goals and objectives, is that conversation really helps the whole...
I think we would be ready. I have to check back in with him. We haven't talked since before the new year, but February work session is what we had him pencil in his schedule, because we gave him all the projects, and he was going to look at the potential growth and revenue and everything and compare those, so.
Perfect, yeah. And, and I think that, in, I don't want to speak for all council, I think, I remember very distinctly at the, so February, perfect, I'm comfortable with that. I remember very distinctly at that offsite, that we all said that what we really want to do is have like a voice in that and prioritization and everything. So, even if it's nothing more than a list right now that we curate, we prioritize, we all discuss and understand what can be done with, I think we found last year that we did a lot with cash funding, and there's some opportunity to do some more with long-term funding or even short-term notes. So I think that conversation goes into a lot of things, the pool, the trail, the land acquisition, the, a lot of these things, right? So, I'm very comfortable, you know, if I were a work session, I can't think of much higher priority stuff. I mean, we have to hit other... Is everyone comfortable with that sort of kind of kicking off the year with that long-term? And, and I am definitely open. You don't need to make it mandatory by any means, but invite the personal finance and CIP committee. They are more than welcome to join. And that could be your guys joining, because I know these first couple of meetings of the year after the budget, if you guys, if they'd rather keep, comfortable with you too.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So we'll make sure Mr. Conley feels ready for that, and it's a good plan.
And if not, we, maybe, let's just say by March, let's make that kind of our, that will shape a lot of our sessions.
Agreed. Along with the smart planning, objective number three, the comprehensive plan update RFP is complete, and it should be posted Friday afternoon, and we're going to leave it open for about four weeks, make sure people have enough time to put together really good proposals. Expect a lot of interest. I hope they don't include land use planning and resident engagement. So we're hopefully using our current comp plan as a baseline, and then, because it is a good foundation, but really updating it with what's happened the last couple of years and what we expect to happen in the future.
Do you see that comp plan update being a administration exercise or with residents? Like, do you see this as a refresh, or do you see this as a, like, a, we ask people to come join and do a whole comp plan, like, committee?
I think we'll need, we emphasize public input.
Okay.
So that'll be council committees, residents, business owners.
So we need to have extra committee when that comes.
Like a steering committee?
Yeah, I think the mayor can care of that.
Yeah, we'll start giving that inside.
If there's a voice of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Now, kind of on the line, I kind of spoke with Ms. Lepin earlier, is like, kind of the smart planning is, like, I travel a lot, so, like, there's spots where it's like, sometimes I'll just take pictures of stuff, and it's like, good and bad. And it's like, as we do like our planning, like, we're trying to figure out just like an idea bore. I'm not a Pinterest person, I imagine, but it's like, like, as we go around and do stuff, like, what do we like? What, like, it's stuff that we don't like, and like, it could be like, you know, roundabouts, like, I'm not a big fan of like the quadruple roundabout through Hilliard, like, you know, sitting there, okay, how can we, like, not, not do that? You sit there and you look, or, you know, hey, I really like how this community did this, or stuff like that. And like, you know, kind of, maybe as we go through this process of trying to like, get that comprehensive plan, it's like, let's just, like, you know, between everybody in here, just like, hey, this is, this is really cool. You know, our, our pros and cons list, and I think maybe work with staff, you know, just kind of go through, kind of use that real stuff to, you know, see how we can implement that.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what I don't want to get into is a rehash of an argument with anyone, like, oh, we should not grow, we should not do it. Like, we are on a path, we are, we are, we are heading downside, so it's, it's more about guiding that path and making sure we don't get off the rails as opposed to creating a new path, just because we spent so much time and energy going in this direction. Are we able to leverage? I'm sure the answer is yes, but I, I forget exactly what it was for, but I remember we all, we had a consultant come in, we all got interviewed, we came in, we like sat in here, and they asked us, like, what do you want us to look like? What do you think of Plain City? Was that all for the mission, was that all for the vision stuff?
That was the branding.
Was that all for the branding stuff?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, because a lot of the questions that came out of that, and like, what you think of it, goes along with, kind of like, you think of branding, it's not just like this brandy, but it's also like the style of the downtown, the style of housing, the style of pathways, parkways. So, I think we could leverage that sort of exercise without spending too much.
And to add to that, of course, I know we started, we used to do the uptown, like, walking and looking at, you know, what section we do. Kind of got away from that because we had a plan in place, but what if we took a meeting, maybe during the daytime or a Saturday, and did like a community where we're walking downtown, right, into different parts, and then we come back and share different areas, how we'd like to see it transform?
Sure. Yeah, we wait till the weather's...
White, yes.
My only, that's my only thing. Yeah. Perfect.
You're posting the RFP Friday? And how long is it going to be out for?
Four weeks.
Okay, because ODOT's dropping all their projects on Friday as well.
And they're due, I just checked, because we go out from February third is when our proposals are due. I'm, I just, I'm just letting you know that you're going to drop Friday, ODOT will drop Friday.
They're going to be due the third, so if you, I mean, if you want to go another week past that.
Okay, yeah.
I just know from my consultants, they, they are swamped when they're getting that ODOT stuff going out. I know that's not the only consultants, but probably eighty percent of your consultants are going to be working on the same stuff I'm working on.
Good to know, thank you. Yeah, so, along with...
So, the only, the only other things I would add, and these are more, I don't know, I think one of these is a bullet and one is a meaningful talk, and we talked through it. So I think from a bullet, we talked about during the budget process, on bullet degree there, it's, it's sure as any regulate, regulations, current balance residential. We also need to dive into the understanding of if we're going to, like, our code enforcement idea. Are we going to execute it? How are we going to execute it? I think I even talked, I had mentioned to Mr. Lafayette, maybe we go find someone that specializes in that, and if there is a mechanism, because we're, we're spending a lot of time on zoning, and we're spending a lot of time on codes, but like, if we can't enforce them, it's kind of, we kind of mess up the end game. So, I, I, I think that I have a, I think we should put a bullet out there. I know that's a little more tactical, and I try to stay away from those things, but I think we all want to go towards a non-slippery slope, broken windows setup.
That's the, that's the, how we get there.
Yeah, the how we get there. And if that answer is, well, this is what makes sense to go after, this is what doesn't make sense to go after, this is what we'd have to invest to do that, this is who we'd have to hire, this is how much money we have to spend. I just think that bringing that to us would be nice. And then, the only other thing is, we need to, and this is probably on me, me or the mayor, we need to get, I think we need to link a little bit closer with the water board to understand fully the timelines and plans for when we're going to have sewer capacity. I've heard everything, I, I send a lot of different committees across the village and different things. People say it'll be ten years, two years, one year, five years. So, getting, working with them closer, maybe attending more of their meetings. You and I can talk about how that works, Haley, but I'd like to challenge us to get a little closer. We've kind of, we've outsourced, which we should, but we need to be a little more connected to that outsourcing. I think we were at the very beginning, and now we just kind of relied on our port, and it's gone well. But I can't answer how long until we're going to have sewer capacity and what our team is doing and what the water board, even Mr. Herrmann, might be the only one that could, so.
No, I mean, I would say, it's changed and...
Yeah. And it's really hard for us to do smart planning without having that connection. So, I don't know how you bolt that reconnection, you know, more, better integration with our, and that can be, you know, me and Nicole often, we, we talk sometime on the phone, but it can be a challenge for me of going to more of their meetings, asking more questions. It could be a challenge for you, Ms. Lepin.
The second and third Tuesday, or the first, first and third Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first one is here. And we, we try to get someone there, but sometimes their agendas are the most applicable to us, so.
Our members side, it'd be like, hey, we're not trying to guide, we're not trying to direct, we're trying, we're, we're keeping our arms length, we're keeping our, we just want to be informed. I think it's a total legitimate relationship to say, I want to be informed about timelines, because how do I plan smartly if I don't have one of the critical pieces that allows for that? So, and I think we just, we, we put effort in Twenty-Three into launching it, and then Twenty-Four, we, they were getting kind of on the ground, and we kind of let it go. But now that it's launched and everything, I feel like we need to make sure it's not something that we forget about and we become... Our, our biggest worry going in was that we would lose control and we'd become so disconnected. So we certainly by choice have done that. So we, I would like to challenge ourselves to be engaged with them, so.
But I, I think in the timeline is important because we have so many developments that are in the works, that are kind of, sort of waiting for that to happen. And, you know, I think there's talk of, you know, if we bring... sort of waiting for that to happen. And, you know, I think there's talk of, you know, if we break, need to bring on additional staff members. You know, we got a pre-plan for that growth. So, you know, knowing when that's going to happen.
Well, even, even Mr. Conley's revenue projections, Miss Lupton or Miss Sonnet's revenue projections are based on some sort of sewer access. So like, if that's not going to happen or there's some delay or there's a push forward or there's something we can do to push for our interest quicker, you know, I think there's a lot of interested parties, uh, to that.
And I think finding out the, their actual construction schedule, because I mean, it's like we can plan for everything, but you know, to actually find out, you know, when cement's being poured and everything, I think that's going to be the key because, you know, if they, they get delayed a year or two, you know, we don't know. And all of a sudden we start planning for stuff or hiring people and, you know, going off of those projections. And if we're planning for twenty-seven and stuff doesn't come out until twenty-nine, then we're stuck with extra costs for those two years that, you know, we didn't need to.
I don't know how applicable this is to, but we have, we get, we have a report. Fire, you know, is it possible to get an update, the water?
Even if it was like quarterly.
Yeah.
Uh, we had to be careful because let's talk to Mr. Lafayette because we are separate entities.
I know we're separate. I just didn't know if it's possible to get, uh.
Yeah, or even if we ask them to come and just kind of provide an update, Miss McLaughlin, you know, she's our representative. So, um, why don't we do this? We'll, we'll add something, we'll sign it to me, um, council if it's okay with that. And then, um, pick someone, uh, from your side, if you, Miss Lupton, Stanford, whoever it is, um, Sonnet can do it. Uh, and we'll get together, we'll figure out what's the best way to re-engage, reconnect, make sure we're having regular, um, at least one of us is going to a meeting at least quarterly, we're having updates quarterly. So we're, I feel like we haven't, outside of my interactions with them, my phone calls, and usually that's to cover a specific like, I heard this, like, is that true thing? And it's not like generic update status. Um, so let's think about how that, but I think that should be a goal for us.
That does have a lot to do, like you said, to making sure that we're staff wise when the sewer's in the ground.
Yeah, perfect. So our representative, our Karen Block, and your name?
Karen Haymeyer.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, as of, as of last, I noted, uh, I don't know if this is still true. The swing representative of the now seven person board is a, um, Plain City resident.
Mr. Sullivan.
Because when Linda joined, I believe it went to a seven person board and the re, so three members are Plain City residents.
Now, Miss, Miss, do we, I'm trying to think, do we know when those terms are expiring and then reseating that? Because I know, I think Mass, Madison County's seats were like one year. And, and I thought, I thought the Plain City ones might have been, I won't say if they were two year, but, you know, I think they're around that site. But I forget the timeframe, but I don't know if they're coming due this year.
I'll check into that and make sure we're prepared.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just go ahead and add to that. So, um, I wanted that added to objective five. Um, down in continued organizational professionalism, we talked about having the one pagers for all the committees. I think that we all agree that some of these committees have way too long terms, that terms are longer than our terms. Um, so I think that, um, this would be a good one for Mr. Dryer, just, you know, we'll do those one pagers. We will have a updated roster of terms when terms expire, including the, and just go ahead and include the water board on those terms. Um, we understand when it's coming up, so it's not scramble, um, if any, uh, things are coming up. And then realign and pass any ordinances to get the, I, I can't imagine we want any boards or commissions to go beyond, you know, four years at the max. I would think two or three and whatever the water board is, is probably in the charter, not the charter, but in the water board, uh, our proposal, like incorporation. But let's look at that and see what we're contractually obligated to and put that. So under continued development of orders, there's professionalism, just a that whole idea of like rules, regulations, um, for boards, commissions, including the water.
Uh, Mr. Dryer did, um, set, like, we worked with some legislation to start aligning our like planning and zoning to the three year.
Perfect.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe a, uh, one page, uh, summary, uh, everyone here about what the terms are for everything. And then you can have the backup and as you need to have legislation, but just so we all know what our word is coming up or anything else. And since I already skipped ahead to five, um, the only other thing I have on five, because we had this last year and it, nothing came up. So I, I, I'm hesitant to put anything on there, but do we want to continue our drive toward, you know, our, our big thing a year ago was policies, procedures, policies, procedures, policies, procedures. We did a pretty good job of that. Are there any gaps that we still have that we should be considering? Because unfortunately, we don't usually know the gaps until they come to us. But, uh, if we could have a, I, I never want to lose sight of the idea that it's overarching vision for us to every time some decision comes to us, we point to a policy or procedure and say, that's how we do things. So I just, I know that's, it's hard to put that into work or implement that, uh, but always keep your eye open for new areas that we can tackle. Those are all mine. Sorry, skip ahead, miss.
No, that's okay. Um, staying on five, we just continue to invest in the, in staff, making sure that everybody's up to date on training. Continuing that plan for the future growth, that includes the general fund projection schedule, which Mr. Conley's going to roll into that CIP. Always looking at staffing levels and cross-training. And then four, um, increasing resident safety and satisfaction. We're increasing our communication, we're increasing the tools we have to communicate with residents. Um, onboarding a, hopefully another police officer this year. Um, I covered a little bit. I don't think we've ever made it a formal goal, but, um, this year we really put an emphasis on pre-planning for events, post-planning, briefings on events, um, things that have never, we've just kind of taken for granted that they've gone safely in the past. Really kind of trying to formalize that, making sure that police and fire and public works and everybody is, is well aware of everything happening.
What was that thing you brought to our attention a few months ago that we could opt into kind of like a cross-state celebration type thing? Is that? Is that this year?
It's next year, I think. Linda attended the Union County kickoff meeting this week. I think it was kind of uneventful, but, um, yeah.
He's six, yeah.
Uh, but yeah, as, as we continue to grow and more people come to our events and they spread on Facebook and everything, just trying to really make sure that we're always on our toes.
And I, I will just put it out there, um, and now that I'm on the department, I will, I guess, take it up as my mantle is one of the big overarching comments I've started receiving this, so bear with me, is that some of our events, well, I'll, I'll pick on Fall Fest just because it's in our grade, has, has become less of an event for Plain City residents and more for the residents that we support around the community. Like a lot of people just didn't have the same feeling that like in the last couple of years. I know a lot of people said it was really crowded. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm saying that we just got to make sure that we continue to focus on our residents in any way, shape or form. I guess as Parks and Rec, that would be my job. So, um, I don't know, I don't know what to do with that comment, but I know I heard a lot of people say, I went there, I didn't recognize anyone, but maybe that's new residents. So I don't know if we do something a little different, but then Crystal Under Clock was unbelievably awesome, so.
I do think, um, a lot of the events that you know, it's tough and I'm going to sort of, I'll pick on Rock the Clock, but I'm just thinking of stuff that's obviously central in Plain City. Um, and I know they have their, he puts it on, but I do think it is still, anything like that, Fall Fest, it, it's still a reflection upon Plain City. So I, you know, it's nice that we have organizations that, you know, do this stuff, but I think we, we need to make sure, you know, that we're involved in things somehow because, you know, our name, our community is on that. Um, you know, just kind of going forward till, you know, I, I think however it is, you know, I think we need to have, you know, continue to have input others, you know, for the police side, but even like the branding and marketing, um, everything's still going to have Plain City on it. So good or bad, you know, we, I think we need to make sure that we're involved with, with anything that happens.
On the onboard, one additional officer, would we be down technically?
Yeah, we'll have to hopefully hire two if we're.
Yes.
If you guys don't mind speaking at that. I don't know if that's personal finance or you guys or what, but I'd like to sit down sometime and just try to figure out when it's time to hire an officer. Because I hate coming and asking to hire an officer all the time and then have to patiently justify it and everything else. You know, it's, it's so tough. Now, I mean, we have interviews next week, we have five candidates, none of them are already certified officers. So we're going to probably, by the grace of God, if two of those are good, we can send them to the academy. So tightly go to that academy and April. We won't, you know, we won't get them out of the academy until the end of the next year. And at that time they get through our training, it'd be twenty twenty-six, if they're any good to us at the agency. So if we could come up with a plan to show that, you know, I, I, and we got a guy that's retiring in twenty twenty-six, so we need to start preparing for that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a valid, valid point. I'm assuming that our, our patients like double, they probably never stop hiring. They probably are just always hiring and like, and I think, you know, we challenge you um, to put a levy on it. And then if you guys, we, we gave the, uh, increase and challenged you guys to levy, you guys did the levy, you guys passed it. So I think having something like that where there is some sort of, uh, because I, I think the cadet program is a great, especially where we are, is a great approach. But it does, it does put you in a hole of six to nine to twelve months, right? So if that means we need to get ahead of it six to nine to twelve months, I think that's the conversation to have of, I see a retirement happening in twenty-six. We need to start that cadet in twenty-five, so we have to start three cadets, what we only need two. I think that's the conversation that, I, I think it's a very valid conversation and I'm happy to, I, I'm happy to have it here. I'm happy to have it at personal finance. I think, um.
I, I wanted to discuss it with personal finance.
Yes.
You know, because we were forced, Officer Frith. I know some of these people that are getting now applying, some of them work at Dairy Queen. Um, they're seeing that, oh my God, I can start out making seventy thousand dollars going to the police department. They don't realize when they get in the police academy and somebody's in their face yelling at them, just like in the military. It, it's going to be a whole different situation because we actually have somebody applying now that actually was in the academy, didn't like being yelled at and quit. Uh, so once they realize when they're in there for that six months and they're constantly being yelled at, telling them they have to do, when they can eat, when they can eat, PT training, back and forth. I mean, it's going to be different for them. They're going to realize this is probably not something that they want to do. You know, so we tried to get those people that we think are going to make it through there because we're not really drawing people right now from other agencies. And I think a lot of that is, it, it has nothing to do with money because, I mean, our guys are very happy with what they're making and they, they, they know that you value them and stuff like that. But I think the problem that we're having with lateral transfers now is that those people from other agencies that have ten years and are actually working a good shift. So if they come here and work a ladder, they're back on their shift. So, you know, that's hard to draw and pull those people when they're finally having a normal family life. Now, if we can pull those people, you know, now the agencies are, they're sending them to the academy. Those people are tied into a contract now for three years. So if they leave, we either got to reimburse them for the money that they're going to have to pay back or something. So it's hard to draw those people in and we're trying our best. And right now, honestly, it's just everybody's fighting for a staple of people. And nobody's going into either fire services and police services like they used to. You know, until that time comes back around where they do, I mean, we're going to be having this issue with parent people. Like I say, you know, we've had, I don't know how many people take the national testing, uh, national test that we make them do. And a lot of them are failing because again, there are people that never wanted to do law enforcement until here recently, that salaries are going up, they see that. And they think they could do that and then they're failing the test and automatically disqualified. Um, and I, and I've looked at that test, it is, it's kind of tough. It is, but that's how you weed a lot of people out of it too. And a lot of it's the personality, uh, test that they have, that that they're not passing. So anyhow, I'd just like to sit down, you know, with Miss Lupton and the rest of you, trying to figure out, come up with a plan on how it is that. When I see like, like we lost the, the public horse guy and within three weeks we had somebody working, you know, and it's like, and I know that's a whole different issue, but it's just like, man, I wish we could do that. Paul can tell you that there's liability in the bill just in the police department. Uh, and it's, it's, it's tough because you want to hire the right people because that one person could, you know, ruin everything. Anyhow, I didn't want to take up a lot of time. I just.
It, it definitely too. Unfortunately.
You know, we're talking, you know, I know that, uh, Miss Lupton, I, but, uh, you know, the FBI stats show in the DOJ usually, you know, the way they try to figure out officers that you see like two hundred fifty homes built needed one officer because at that time it was three point one people per home, right? I know that that's dropped down, I think, two point seven people per home. So if that number's two seventy-five or three hundred, we have an idea. Because I know that we're talking already building about five hundred homes this year, I heard. So now we're already back behind the eight ball again. I'm trying to hire somebody. If we hire somebody in that academy, I mean, it's just time. So, you know, we've never really had a plan in the past. Okay, we met this right here. Now we know that we need to have an officer. I've had to come in and do PowerPoint presentations. I've had to show everything else, you know, and yet like the communication that we're hiring. Not saying that we don't need one by any means, just, you know, do we do the same thing, hire those people as don't study them, need them? I, I think we need one, but I'm just saying, it's just never one comes to fire them all for you. And I, and, and I, and it needs to be, you know, I shouldn't just come in and say, hey, I want to hire somebody. There needs to be justification for it. I'd just like to have some kind of place to show us where.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is the right time to have these conversations on a high level and then with the personal finance. I think not unlike the CIP or anything like that, when we talk, I think that what you're saying is probably exactly what most of council and certainly what I would rather have is like, again, it's not a ad hoc decision every time we do something. That we have a rule that once, you know, we, a retirement is six months out, we begin hiring. Or the rule is that, um, once we add the population of this much or this many houses, we hire someone. I would much rather it be, and I know, I, I, I know the law enforcement by no means is formulaic. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, but the exercise of staffing, I would prefer to be a little more formulaic just so that it doesn't feel like a request every time you're coming. And instead it's when you come, you'd be like, all right, well, you agreed and we all agreed that every time I have someone that is going to retire, I'm just going to pick our retirement in six months that I should start hiring. So I have someone that I basically retired in nine months, so I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to be posting in the next two months. Uh, if anyone has any issue with that, speak now for a hold your peace because there's going to be a posting. We're going to have an extra officer for hopefully a couple of months, maybe not, hopefully a couple of months, and then, uh, we'll move on.
I mean, we, we talked about policy, certainly that to be a policy about making sure that we're main, that we're maintaining, we've got built in, we've got growth, uh, the, you know, the growth projections built in and we know when those different things are going to hit. And we know that we, that can all be policy based and I don't think from a council perspective, that's not our goal. Our goal is to say, the goal should be get a policy. And we want to make sure that we're correctly, uh.
Executing.
But, uh, not, not funding, staffing. I couldn't think of, but we're properly sta- like that should, our goal is properly staffing departments, police, you know what I mean? And then we leave that to you to come up with a policy of, of the different things and whatever studies you need, you know, that you base off of. So that then we're just like, yep, that makes sense. It's part of your policy and it's part of our goals.
And it's funny, cause I, you know, I checked with like Dublin, I've checked with, I, I, I have a, a great friend that works for Sunbury Police Department. They're going through the same issues we are with the growth and everything. And I actually reached out to Renee a couple of times. Cause we've worked together and tried to. Feed off each other. And, you know, we tried to come up, you know, we, everybody looks at those FBI stats and everything else, how to, how to hire people and stuff. Dublin does it a different way. Hillier does it a different way. But when it comes all back to looking at it, it still goes with what the FBI said years ago and had to hire. I mean, it still comes to the same number, uh, you know, whether you said, do the cause of service anymore. Our goal is always to keep crime down, not to make it.
Sure, sure.
Hey, crime, the cause of service isn't that many now. So, what, do we wait till crime goes up to hire somebody?
Yeah, nothing.
Goal is to prevent it from happening. I know you guys hear all the heartbreak ends and everything else and stuff. And I hate when people say, well, it's all these new houses and everything being built. Twenty-five years ago, I was dealing with the same thing. It just wasn't on Facebook. You didn't hear it every single time.
And the, and the neighborhood that Keith gave, I'm gonna do is our neighborhood, which is down. So, I, I would put that out of my, my car. Uh, I think the first time my wife ever met Chief was when he came to, uh.
That's the point. Like whatever the, whatever the, whatever it is.
Sure.
That drives why you would want, like if your, if your policy says, we're gonna hire when crime goes up, which I don't think we should do. But whatever you policy, I think that's just, that's what we're saying. Write, write that policy. And our goal is proper staffing for the police department. And I guess.
I feel like the public work should be the same way or.
That's, I, I, earlier I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Proper staffing for the village, including the police department.
It's great to have like you guys. But not just you, but, I mean, it's finally good to have administrator that I've had a conversation with and, and talk about this kind of stuff. So.
And, and I think, I think our mantra has been, at least for the four years I've been on, is we, we all, and this is, this unfair to you guys. It is. It is a hundred percent unfair to you guys. But I don't, not just the police, the administration as well, is that we always kind of are a little conservative in our hiring. Because our last, we never want to do that. It's like, I, I think it's been very stated that our, we're very conservative, which is not fair to you guys. Because by the time this, uh, by the time, uh, this son needs help, it's been three years, right? Like it, that is clear and obvious to us. So, um, you know, press, push us where it needs to be pushed on like, like you did with communications hat. You say, hey, listen, we need, we need to do something here. Like, so push us, I think is to be financial stewards of the taxpayers' money. And also we always want to avoid any sort of. You know, I, I'm very happy to say that since I've been on, we've never had to have like a layoff, like, so like, it's not always gonna be the path, like I know it's happened in the past. So, it's a, it's a balancing act. I don't want to ever over hire. I, I just don't want, and that's why things like knowing the sewer and water is so critical. Because there could be a year we had to hire five, just impossible. That's just not possible for the budget. It's not po- it's not possible from Chief telling us, there's not five officers to hire. We couldn't try, you know, we couldn't do it. So, we need to have the planning to get to that point. So.
Like you said, it was like layoffs. Okay. Twenty twelve was a horrible, horrible year for the village. I mean, Paul. It was ugly. It was taking people separating departments. I mean, it was bad. Uh, and we never want to be there. But I also don't want to be four officers or five officers behind, cause we're growing. And like I said, the only way to stop hiring officers is to stop the growth.
Well.
Any staff.
Yeah. As we said, you know, the retirement planning are kind of projections with that. That's, I don't want to say kind of the easy part, but you can make those projections. You know, these guys are three years out, four years out. We can kind of plan for that. You know, the tough part is when somebody mid-career leaves. And even if they're very generous and give, hey, six months notice, three months notice, but we can't, we can't capture that. Like that, to me, that's, and you know, that's our struggle is when you get that, that person, you know, that's the tough one that we have to, you know, try to get to. Cause we can't just replace that person in three months.
Right. And, you know, it's, uh. You know, the, the recent, uh, or the, the recent officer that just left, okay? You know, that might have been surprising to you guys. It wasn't surprising to me. I know he'd been struggling for a long time. It wasn't what he thought law enforcement, thought it was gonna be. That's why he went to a, you know, a whole different private sector. So, you know, and again, that's why we always want to make sure that we're hiring the right people. And I've been very fortunate since I, you know, this is going on my 10th year as a chief. He's the first guy I've lost. So, we're doing something good by keeping people. But every now and then you're gonna get somebody like that person. Who just feels like after four years, you know, he had the four years in. And we always say in law enforcement, that's what it's going to, you know. What they say usually like four years, you know, your marriage is gonna last or it's not. It's the same thing with officers. I mean, once you get past that four or five years, you don't start, you don't question yourself as much. Is this what I want to do? He was at that point. So, you know, you know, so it, it is, it's hard to plan for something like that. And hopefully we keep the people that we have, but you never know. And that's why this time we're hiring now too.
So, you mentioned, I think it was in December or November about getting in the academy. Is there spots available? And you said that's, that's a huge trigger for you to be able to know. Cause you need to plan out to make sure that there's a spot for them. I remember you saying that. And so, I think this is where this conversation can go as well.
So, luckily when I called Westerville, cause I really, you know, I.
You said you liked their.
I do. I like it. Matt liked it. Our Officer Fritz liked it and stuff. And I, you know, everything I saw was great. So, I wanted to send them back there, you know. People tell us issues with other agencies, like where, where they have to stay all night and stuff. It's hard for somebody that has a family life. That wants to stay all night for five days a week at the academy. Westerville didn't do that. So, anyhow, that question, I was luckily, luckily I called them and they had one spot available. So, we were able to open that for April, or it might be the end of April. Okay. Well, then they called us back. So somebody left. So, they had two. So, we probably was put those two reserved. By the grace of God, that we get two people hired. Because just because we have interviews next week and we say, hey, we got two people that we're interested in. We offer them a position, uh, you know, unless, you know, they have to go through the whole process. If they fail the polygraph, that they fail a PT test, if they fail, fail, you know, the background checks or something like that, and we start all back over. Have to cancel one of those positions and probably have to pay the thousand dollars that we had to reserve it for.
Is it fair then to say that?
You know, so now it's like a time crunch. So, try to hire somebody. We don't want, I'm never going to just settle for somebody to get them through. You know, so now it's a kind of a time crunch to make sure that we get them in there in April, where that hire process is so long. You know, when you talk about, man, now we're at the position, we gotta hire five people at one time. I wouldn't even be able to train five people at one time. With the, I mean, you know, we talked about this commercial, we're looking at, it's gonna be built and everything else and stuff in the future. And what that's gonna bring and stuff, you know, I'm trying to plan for that. So, anyhow, I don't want to crack this all out down. Time. But I saw it on there and thought that might be a time to talk about a goal.
Okay. I know, I've already said, I mean, think.
The line. Yeah. All right.
Okay. Well, we have, um. A few changes we can make and redistribute.
Yeah. And again, goals, they're, they're fluid. They're gonna, like, we threw out some stuff at you. Those are things that I just had noted. I think other contributors noted, it's just important to us, um, how they get implemented, when they get implemented. It's not like these are all tomorrow issues. There are more things to keep in mind, keep to think about. Outside of that, we have. Is there anyone else that has any questions about goal trajectory?
Just going for just the, um, rest safety, staff back, I don't know, work fit, communication one. I have problems like the weekly reports without, I know, like the, the, uh, she has like a couple of that she said. I just like, I just put this out. I think increasing that, you know, it, I had to search for a website. You know, I think like it's those patients have just Facebook page or something like that. I think just that those are nice updates that people can really see a lot of stuff. And then I think adding in, have kind of put it. Kind of reports for, you know, BCA, it's kind of like what's going on, like happy to put it there because, you know, the. These people who watch YouTube, you know, it's like everybody's like, I wish, you know, I didn't complain or this was happening. I think happy and just keeps up our community of residents.
So, the, couldn't agree more. So, the new communications individual that you're talking on hiring, are you going for a early career, mid-career, late career?
Um, probably early to mid.
Early to mid. So, I think that, um, realistically that individual, um, whoever it is, you know. There's, there's not a goal on here right now for that position and to maximize that position. And I think what you're hitting at is that. So, maybe what it is, is, you know, six months in, you know, if they're early to mid-career, you know, it becomes high. But maybe six months in, we should have a, you know, update from them or something. And we should think about their, like, what's their goal? What's our goal as, what do we want? Maybe our challenge should be to Miss Lupton to start and then to the communication person, and then back to us of like, what do we want this role to do? What do we want them to own? How do we want communication to look? Um, certainly there are things that we've discussed. That I won't discuss here that we want to get ahead of, right?
I'd like to hear it to start from, what is your expectation in hiring the community? What, thank you for you here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they, we may already like fuck purpose.
Yeah, so.
We're anticipating in February, um, I'd like to counsel to adopt the job description and title.
Sure.
That we've been done for this position. Um, so we're, we'll definitely have that conversation.
I think, yeah, so maybe, so perfect. Maybe just add a goal around, I don't know, maximizing that position, however you want, however you want to phrase it.
Highlight the weekly reports and that's anything.
Like I said, like there's some stuff, you, you sent out so many weekly reports and I'm like, oh, that's awful. Like, so it's just how, how much, you know, the stack, you know, the accomplishments here, uh, you know, kind of mighty.
And I want to say the last three years we've gone from. Application and it's fantastic. So. And sitting on council, I feel more connected knowing what is going on, on the day-to-day stuff than what we were before. Cause we never really had that communication. We, we got information when we did, we, you know, two, every two weeks, they report, oh, this is what we've done. I, I like that we're getting that all the time. Cause you guys are probably the same as me. Residents are always asking, so what is this going on? You know, and with those weekly reports, I can report, yeah, this is what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah. Because, you know, that I think's great, but I mean, there are so many changes that are coming up. I think there's so many exciting things, like the DBO, different things like that. I, I just think giving more information outside of people, you know, asking when stuff's happening and. Yeah. At some point, people have to get themselves, do our job, put it out there. Tyler Joe.
Just out of curiosity, do we have any, um, positions that are kind of never been filled, like been left and we never filled them, but we're still active?
The engineer is one of those. Um. And I think there's a, maybe the county clerk type of.
No.
Yeah, so I think.
Well, that's gonna, I'm hopefully gonna, I'd like to go ahead and get that job description going too. Um, even if it's later this year, we evaluate as the budget happens. But I think the engineer and maybe the PIO, but it was, the way it's technically written is not what we're looking for. So, I think those are the two from the salary survey that were adopted, but not filled.
When it has to be growing, we want to look at pulling back the inspections to here instead of West Jeff or.
Yeah, I think that goes along with this, when the sewer opens up, how we're teed up to handle that, the hundreds of houses that are gonna come.
Just to be clear, your Friday update, that stuff is, everything in there is generally public?
Yeah, I write it as I think.
We can share.
I was writing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I share it with my guys every Friday because I don't get to see them all the time. And when they get to read that, they find out more about what's going, they love that. They love that letter.
I write it for public consumption.
Anyways, yeah, I just want to say, I told you earlier, but I, I think you do a great job. So, and you get on pretty quick. So, I was like the little word.
I like to make people think they're. Guess what?
Didn't hear it from me, but Fall Fest is next week.
Don't tell anybody outside of me.
All right, um.
You really want to know one thing that's nice though, is that I don't know if you guys have heard during this week, we've been hosting this training over here. Full of state highway patrol, Westerville Police Department, Worleton Police Department, I mean, all places from all over. They, you know, some of the, one of them actually works in Westerville. He used to work at Union County Sheriff's Office. He left five years ago. He goes, I haven't been in Plain City for five years. He goes, I can't believe how nice it is now. He goes, I never knew the house. I left the houses where he started on 161. He said, I drove through, I almost thought I was in the wrong place. And just to have people say how my building is and the police department and everything, you know, maybe that's one reason it's hard for me to leave now. Cause I'm finally getting those compliments. Cause.
When I started. You never got him in that little shack you were in?
You don't understand. When I started, the police department was in a job site trailer. So, when you're visiting people and they're like talking to their, they're like, man, I don't know where the hell I'm at, but I'm in a trailer. So, I mean, it's, it's. Well, they, they're talking about coming through town and how the downtown has changed and the sidewalks and everything looks so nice. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, it gives guys now a lot of, you know. Police Department guys, a lot of higher, you know, morale and everything else. So. Definitely. Yep. And I just want to say.
She told me, you don't want to start the game and take it from other departments because that is a game we will lose.
So, I'm just, so I'm past it.
Oh, you're back to here.
Local agencies, not, you know, but I, I, because I almost wanted to hang a big sign up in there.
Now higher.
For Justin put on the TV out there.
Oh, yeah.
Smooth.
With just, with just application.
Our salaries now.
And an application.
We're still not Dublin, Hillier, whatever, but we're still comparable. And it's nice now. I mean, and finally one of the guys over there said, I think he was. He said, man, you guys probably got your pay up there where it needs to be and stuff. And that's awesome. He goes, we're hoping to catch you now. So.
You don't want to play that game either. Thank you, thank you to keep it.
I, I thought something happened. Like, okay, if something happens, I mean, I bless now. So.
No, it's just their, we have to buy a new rough light machine. They always want to boost it, which I'm, you know, happy for. Highway patrol was here to investigate his retirement. And you know, those guys are the best piece. Some of them, they start driving all the way up here. Everyone of them compliment how nice the building is and how nice town is, but they're still eating their lunch in their.
Something's on every.
Yeah.
Uh, one question, I think, uh, Ms. Mayor, you have it prior. Um, I know for BZA, I guess if I'm on it, there's a committee or a position open on that. Any update on any of our other, um, boards? Are they all filled? Are we looking to?
I think economic development's looking for a couple of new.
I saw that on.
Yeah. Um, but other than that, I think everything else is filled.
Everything else is filled. There is one representative of our department made that term as far as, that were, it's great to spend time with that. To determine that position, where the person wants to continue serving on stuff, but that's only the one. All the other conversations are much later, I think.
Yes. Do you have any, anyone that have their application and hopefully Jim's filled with that?
I gotta tell you though, the two positions is not as bad as it's been. So.
Yeah.
Not terrible. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll. I am very much in the vein of it would be nice to get, you know, I always like it when we get new representation that we, it doesn't, we don't go to our wells, right? You know, so, uh, we'll see. Maybe if we can get some. You know, so uh, we'll see. Maybe if we can get some, some of the new neighborhood. Now that I'm on Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Maybe. I think this bit, this, it's close to finishing the cycle for me. I think this is one of my last committees I haven't been on. So I've never been on economic. Go for the, go for the grants. Let me try to be on every committee. So. Uh, we have no unfinished, we have no new, so I would.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.